The council meeting for Tuesday, June 10th, 2025. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia. Mayor Greenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Homa.
Here.
Councilmember Maddox.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Wiley.
Here.
Mayor Greenberg, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Item number four is motion to excuse Councilmember Garcia.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ms. Garcia is excused. Item number five is the approval of the May 27th, 2025, City Council regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes. Second?
Motion is second. Any discussion? Any changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The meeting minutes have been approved. Item number six is the first of two public comments. Has anyone signed up?
We have a sign up from DJ Howard.
I came to the last meeting to, oh, sorry, my name's DJ Howard, resident, new resident. I came to the last meeting to see the first and second reading of the budget. And I was expecting some level of presentation of kind of how, where our money's going and what's going on with it. We've got, you know, 15 categories here, but we don't really see what we're spending our money on. And, I mean, this is a pretty big topic when I think most of us got this big letter that our property values have went up 96% in Maplewood. And Amber told me at the Ward One meeting, it was interesting to find that a lot of the budget for Maplewood does not come from property tax. It comes from sales tax, which I think is relevant for our residents to know where it's coming from and where it's going. And when Amber told me that, I quit shopping at Home Depot and started going to Lowe's. Like, I want that money to stay in our community, and that's good. And like, we should explain that to our residents, because I do think it'll help. But I also have like, an expectation that Maplewood spends our money frugally. And, you know, during that conversation, when I learned about the, the sales tax revenue stream, we were trying to figure out why three people showed up to the Ward One meeting. And, and we talked about yard signs. And we said, well, you know, yard signs are, they, they work really well, but, but they're expensive and, and they cost money. But we're getting ready to, to vote on a $15,000 drone. I walked through the parking lot. We got really nice fire truck, really nice ambulance, really nice police cars, really nice public works trucks. So it, it would be good to understand kind of where money's going and, and again, where it's coming from. You, you are reducing the budget in a lot of categories. Public Works down $300,000. I think Public Works very, very important. But we're up 3.3 million in this capital improvements, which is where this $15,000 for a drone is coming from. So again, I just want to understand, and I guess that was my expectation, is a quick, you know, pie chart that says this is what's going on in these categories? Because this doesn't help me to understand a $26 million budget that's went up by almost $4 million over the last three years. And I think that would be good for us to see that. My last comment is on this drone. I read your packet about it, and, and I see that you did some research about the state of Missouri banning Chinese-made drones. DJI is specifically being investigated. At the federal level, there is an, an open call for a, like, a national defense, national security review of it. And if it doesn't get that by December 31st, they're pulling their FCC license. So there's a real possibility, no agency has been assigned to do that audit, and it's automatically in the National Defense Authorization Act that it will, they will be banned. They will lose their FCC license December 31st if that doesn't happen. And it might be 50/50 right now, considering there's been no action on it. So I think that's a, a really important part of that purchase that is missing. Thanks.
Okay. So addressing the, the issues with regards to the budget, we had numerous budget work sessions. You're aware of that, correct? Yeah. And that's, that's where we discuss the individual line items.
Yeah, I understand that that's where you discuss it. And you guys make the decision. And you, you have all these different drafts. And we, you represent us to bounce those around and figure out what categories you put them in, and then you present it to the people. I don't want to see bouncing it around. I just want the Cliff Notes. And that's what I think we're missing.
And we will have the drone discussion later. So is there anyone else that has signed up for the public comment?
No one else has signed up at this time.
And announcements? I'm looking over to the empty seat there.
I can announce that the Juneteenth celebration is, is coming up. We don't have another meeting before Juneteenth. That's taking place on June 21st from 11:00 to 1:00 with free admission to the Maplewood Family Aquatic Center. So we'd love to see some representation of that event.
Okay. Any other announcements? Okay. We'll move on to item number eight, which is the presentation, presentation of the Designer Review Board Historic Preservation Commission update.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for having me. The, as an old, I'm sure you've heard the joke, as politicians, you've heard the joke that someone asked a politician how long you prepared for a four-hour speech, and he said 15 minutes. And then he said, how long do you prepare for 15-minute speech? He says, I don't know, I've never given one. The, the length of this is, everything's fine. We're doing the same thing. We haven't had a preservation meeting. We haven't had a need for it since the last time I was here. We're fully staffed. We've got, we're fully appointed. Some rotating in and out. We moved, we've got an engineer, which is important. And then, we lost, she, the, the architect left town. She moved. And then the, so we were replaced by an engineer. And then we had a real estate broker who was replaced, well, not replaced. She had, she's giving birth to a second child. She's like, I got a draw line somewhere. So we've got an interior design coming in. So everything seems to be working well. People are complaining. They're not complaining to me. And I guess a good group of people to work with. I think things are moving right. And like I said, if anyone's got any issues or complaints, they have them brought to me. Is that what you're looking for? Is that the kind of report you want? Hold on.
Have, have the submissions been sufficient to make decisions?
Oh, yeah. Most of them are. There was one, I was out last week, or last month, I, my son was graduating. And, and some of the ones this month had this weird, it, what it turned out, as it turned out, Brian explained to me, I couldn't understand it. But they had approved most of it, and it had something to do with a front yard fence. And so they were only coming back with a front yard fence. And that wasn't immediately apparent to me before, when I read the stuff. But no, the submissions are, and if they're not, people will fix them. I mean, they're, they're, no one's ever complained about them. Yeah, generally, there's, yeah, certainly enough, well, if there's not enough information, we don't make a decision. It gets table for the next time. So, I mean, you know, any decisions that are made are based on adequate information, even if the decision is to move on to the next week. So.
So in, in your opinion, is there anything that City Council can do that would make?
Yes. I believe that margaritas should be supplied at every meeting. And that would make them more interesting. It's, it's nice that there's no budget necessary for it. You've kept, the important thing was to make sure that we have a full complement. And, and it's a nice mix of people. They're, they're easy to work with and are interested in, in, in helping the, the people that come for us. So, no, that's it.
Okay. Are there any questions for Sean?
I'm able to answer all questions. Whether you want the right answer or not, that's a different story. All right. Thank you. And, and thank you to you guys. I mean, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. You gotta go. Thank you.
Okay, Sean. We'll move on to unfinished business. Bill 6282, final reading, adopting budget for the city of Maplewood, Missouri for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 through June 30th, 2026.
Motion to approve the bill. Second?
We have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? I think we've talked about it quite a bit.
Just, I, I do have one.
Yes.
Question, based on Mr. Howard's question and feedback. We do have the budget report and summary, full summary online, right? So if people want to look into that, I don't remember if there is a pie chart, but I know we saw that from Lexi. And there is, okay. So you can look at some of this stuff with more granularity if you want to dive into that, right? Okay.
Yeah. Although I will note, the feedback is well taken to have a, a summary visually represented at the time that you're reading the first and second version of the budget. If folks haven't been tuning into the work session, I think that makes sense, and we can certainly work that into the presentation. But yes, we do publish a formal budget book that's fairly exhaustive in terms of departmental information, individual expenditures. That's available after the budget is approved. It takes us about four to six weeks, although it'll be faster with our new budget software to produce. One of the other reasons that we went with ClearGov as our budget software is it allows us to establish a transparency portal online so that residents can click through and see the budget in real time as we're moving throughout the year. That hasn't been enabled yet, but it will be after July 1.
And that'll have that granularity, like, down to the line item? And is it spend and budget, or just shows the budget?
Just shows the budget. We will update it quarterly. You've been getting these quarterly variance reports from the finance director. That will be reconciled with the budget software. So you'll see budget to actuals in the system on a quarterly basis, not daily, since we have a lot of fund transfers that occur, and it could be pretty confusing. And then I just wanted to mention as well, the, the note about the $4 million increase. Obviously, a significant portion of that this year is our Greenwood and Great Rivers Greenway Trail Edition, which is 80% grant funded, but did produce a significant increase in this year's budget in capital improvement.
And just to add, DJ, I know you said you, you were aware that we had work sessions, but just in case you did not, also, no, those were streamed live. So you can watch the videos from those. There were members of several different departments who did sort of present to us and allow us to ask some of the questions that I think that we thought residents may also have. And so while, I know that's not exactly what you're asking for, is it's kind of three days of longer format conversations. I think a lot of the questions that you might have could be answered there as well. And definitely, a, a good note about providing a Cliff Notes version. And thank you for coming to the Ward One meeting. Really appreciate your presence there.
I also think it's a valid concern with regards to what's funding the budget. You know, over 50% of our budget comes from sales tax. And especially in light of the, the reassessments that we've seen, many people might be concerned that the, the city's trying to profit off of that. And, yeah, so, and, and they didn't do a very good job on the reassessment of breaking it down at all. They just said, you know, here's your new number. And some of us are over 65, so I'm hoping, and, and that, that process is just, you know, very ambiguous, too. So I don't know, you know, for the senior citizens, they won't tell anyone anything until, I guess, September. And then it's too late to contest your assessment. But, you know, the, the tax bills, I, I believe, if you go on the St. Louis County website, and maybe we should publicize that so people understand that what portion of their tax dollars, property taxes are going to the city of Maplewood. And, and it, it might alleviate some of the anger, at least directed at us. But the, the county has some splaining to do. So any other discussion with regards to the budget? Roll call, please.
Mayor Greenberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Homa.
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox.
Yes.
Councilmember Page.
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley.
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham.
Yes.
Bill 6282 is approved as ordinance 6070 something. I left off a number on my notes. I'm sorry.
Okay. We'll, we'll move on to new business. The first item is Resolution 25-8, authorizing the city manager to accept the bid from DSLR Pros in the amount of $14,619 for the purchase of a drone. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the resolution. Second?
Discussion. You know, originally, we had a lengthy discussion about the, the can, the safety concerns. And, and at the time, there's more research done. And we, we didn't pass it the first time because we wanted to make sure that there were policies in place. So that, that was one part of the discussion. And those policies have been established. But the other part of the discussion is whether or not the drone would be, you know, allowed to, to be used. And our understanding is that it would be grandfathered in. I'm not sure what information can be transmitted, you know, from the drone that, that wouldn't be controlled between the operator and the, the drone itself. But obviously, there's ample concern from our federal government. And, you know, I don't know to what extent it's justified, or if it's, this is one of the capricious decisions being made by the administration, just because it's associated with China. So, you know, in, in, I don't know exactly how to answer the question as, as to what's going to happen in the future. We do know that the other drones that we've looked at, especially the American-made ones, or the ones that weren't restricted, were a lot more expensive.
And, yeah, an inferior product, so.
And, and actually, this is a pretty good number, the $14,000. With everything that's included, usually that's the price of, of that particular DJI drone by itself. So, you know, it's a bargain in some respect, but at the same time, and I hope that it, you know, has the effect of proving its value. You know, if we're able to save one life. And this one has the infrared capability, is that correct? I didn't see that in the documentation.
It should be the same specs as the one that we brought forward in March, with the difference being the number of batteries. I think they, they left off two batteries in the, the original bid.
Infrared is important for the fire department. It's also, you know, helpful in night pursuits. So, you know, the, it meets all of the criteria, whether or not it's something that's going to create a problem down the road with regards to the FAA. I don't know. But based on the information that we have, we should be able to use it for its lifespan. So I'm hoping that's the case. In the meantime, I'm hoping that it proves its value, too. Is there any discussion on this?
Yeah, I just had a question for you regarding the training that's required. I know the memo stated that the hope would be to get one person from each department trained in using it. And was curious if there's anyone that is already trained to use these, and what upkeep of that licensure would look like from a cost standpoint and time standpoint.
Yeah, we have two police officers who are currently trained and licensed. I think it would be ambitious to try to get somebody from every department, but at the minimum to have our public works and our fire department also be licensed and, and trained to operate it. Certainly, for executive staff, we could lean on, on other staff for some of those community development needs. But if, if there's a desire for training and, and time for it, then, yeah, we can certainly facilitate that.
And then, thank you. And additionally, I was curious, I saw the note as well about the consideration of, you know, sharing with other local municipalities and kind of what the drawbacks of that would be. Do we know if there are other municipalities locally that, that also have drones? And if they should put in a request for utilization of it, what would that look like?
We haven't discussed what that could look like with other municipalities. We are aware that there are other cities nearby that have one to three, depending on the size of the city. That's not a conversation we've had, but we're certainly open to initiating it. Obviously, for emergency response purposes, there would be some limitations there. But were it needed for more of those community development or inspection needs, I think that's something that we could, we could offer. So if the request from council is that we look into that and make our, our operators available for that, we're certainly willing to do that.
I was just thinking most specifically about the recent storms and that, how Maplewood's resources were deployed to other municipalities. And I assume that this would be probably one of those kinds of cases in which we would want to do that.
Yes. And we have benefited from other agencies deploying their drone for our purposes. So the last time we had Deer Creek flooding in November, we benefited from footage that was captured by another fire department at our scene.
Thank you.
In, in my work on the SAFE Coalition, with the SAFE Coalition, they, they employed drones, and they were very helpful. On Friday, I can have that discussion with the mayors of Brentwood and Richmond Heights to see if they have the capability and how it's served their community. And so, and, you know, I'll, I'll report back. Obviously, it's after the fact here. But the fact that the three of us are getting together gives us an opportunity to talk about things like that. So.
Yeah, I have a couple, couple of questions. I know we talked about this at length a while ago when this first came to us. So I'm trying to recall some of that so that I don't duplicate questions. I, I think I, I'm over the hump as far as usage. Like, I understand the benefit for police, fire, and the building department. I do, I, just a quick Google search, came up with a laundry list of lawsuits that have come from just seemingly generic drone usage. And so I'm curious, one, of any legal risk that we may be in by utilization of the drone and opening us up to lawsuits and litigation? That's my first question. Second question is, if we're capturing footage using a drone of anything, is that going to become something that people can request through FOIA and Sunshine? Because there's another thing that came up in just a little bit of research that I was doing. If something's captured that people want access to, they see our drone, are we then going to be open to them requesting access to that footage? If it's part of an investigation, you can request a police report. I mean, if it's part of a report, like, I would assume you'd be able to request some footage and access to that?
Well, so under the Sunshine law, there are specific provisions for law enforcement records. If it was being conducted by the law enforcement, it would fall under those provisions. So if it's more specificity within that section, is that if it's an incident report, which is really just the who's involved, the time, location, then those are generally speaking, open records. But the police report itself is a closed record until the investigation becomes inactive. Same thing with respect to, for example, body cam video or video on the front of a police car. If there's an active investigation, then it's a closed record and does not become open. Even if it becomes an open record, if it captures something that's in a private location, where there's someone has an expectation of privacy, then it is, again, generally speaking, a closed record. Even if the video generally, big picture would be open, then there are specific things in the private areas that would not be. So that's sort of the, the Sunshine law piece of it, which is really, it's going to be a case-by-case basis. But if it's not part of an investigation, and it's not otherwise a closed record, then I think it would, because it's being kept by the city of Maplewood, if we have it, it would be a record that's available. That being said, it's, it's subject to the state's retention records. I don't think it's something that's probably going to stay in a file forever. But it's not, you know, it's not exempt from the, from the, from the Sunshine law, unless there's a specific exemption in one, Section 100 or Section 021, which applies. As it relates to the lawsuits that you're seeing, I think those are generally, I've not seen all of them, obviously, but I think that they're generally talking about, you know, when the drones are being used as a search without meeting the search exception. So are you looking at a place that you really shouldn't be looking at without a warrant? And I have not reviewed the policy in full, the general order that's been proposed. But I do know that there's some very specific language in here, for example, in the special circumstances provision, which says that unless one of the exceptions to, unless exigent circumstances are present, they're going to go get a warrant when they see something that leads them to believe there's criminal activity, and, or they're even not even, they're not even going to use the drone if there's a reason to believe there's criminal activity without getting that warrant first. So although I have, I've not spent any time looking at this general order, it does look like they have, Chief Neighbors is very good about keeping all of those things in mind and making sure that our police department is, is cognizant of, you know, the constitutional restrictions, whether it's for the drone or anything else. And so it does seem that the general order that's been put together would help facilitate complying with those constitutional issues that are arising in those lawsuits.
Does that include incidental, like, the fire department is, the building department is looking at my building, and they noticed the meth lab that got up on the top floor? What is, how does that work?
So if they were looking at the, if they were doing their job, right, and they just happened to see it, then they would probably have to go get a, they would go say, we need a warrant to go look into this person's roof and see what's going on up there. I don't want to speak to every circumstance. But, but generally speaking, yeah, but generally speaking, the drone can capture what's in public view without there being a problem. But then there's a question of, well, where are they going? Are they in public view? Are they seeing something when they're doing something else and they just happen to see it? One of the exceptions for searches, for example, is under the plain view doctrine, which is if you see it in plain view, you get to.
Right, because the rooftop, I guess is my question, right? Like, I came to the top of people's refrigerators. I don't know how dusty they are, but most people don't.
But, but.
So it's like.
Yeah.
More of that.
So again, I think it depends. Are we sending in the drone up to do searches and look for things that are just going on? Or are we already up there for a very specific purpose and we happen to see it? Those are different circumstances. Once you see something, I don't think you have to ignore.
Like, if you were doing a building inspection with a human in the building, and you found the meth lab, they would still go back and tell the cops, you need to get a warrant and go in there.
Exactly.
It's, it's about intent.
That's what I need to understand.
If they're just searching around, just search around, that's much different than, than accidentally seeing something.
But even if they do accidentally, they still have to seek a warrant and go through the whole process.
Depends.
Or generally speaking, we could potentially maybe, all right, fine.
I believe that the way the general order is written is that unless there are exigent circumstances, in other words, someone's running and there's a threat, you know, that's one of the circumstances we have for searches generally that's an exception, then you would have to go get a warrant. So if you don't have those circumstances, and I, I read this to say that they would, they would go get a warrant before they pursue.
Thank you.
One more question. Sorry. As far as insurance goes, I'm assuming we're covered with a drone the same as we would be for another piece of equipment, even if we're loaning it out to other departments for use?
Most likely. I think we'd have to look into that loaning provision. That's not, not something we had contemplated originally. But yes, this would be included. We have an itemized equipment list of everything that the city owns that is insurable. So this would be added.
Are we pretty late to the drone club? Is there going to be a lot of demand to borrow our drone?
I think we're, we're a little late. I don't know that there's going to be.
It's a moot issue, I guess, is what I'm getting at. I don't.
Too much demand. But to, to the point of, you know, should an agency want to use multiple drones for some kind of project? We, yeah, we could certainly be available for that. I think it, it makes good sense to offer that and, and to provide that service to our neighbors if it's needed.
I still wonder, I still, I'm still, I still am hung up a little bit on the need of municipality our size, especially if there are neighboring municipalities that have them that are available for our use. I understand the benefit. I've seen drone footage of the Deer Creek flooding. It's helpful to have that. But if we're late to the drone club and a lot of other people have them, do we actually need it? I, I trust staff. I mean, you know, putting this together, I think there is a need, but it's, I'm still wrestling with that a little bit.
I agree with you, Councilmember Homa. I've not been in favor of the drone since it was very first brought to council. We do have a tight budget. There are a lot of other needs right now in the police department. And I'm just not sure that spending $14,000 on a drone that's mostly probably going to sit on a shelf somewhere.
somewhere is the smart decision at this moment. Maybe in the future. I do also see, since we've had the storms, some of that drone footage and how it was able to capture things that even airplanes driving, riding by and stuff could not capture. So I see the use and how it could be useful, but I also agree that with a municipality the size and with having other partners, like St. Louis County, who I researched and does have a fleet of drones that we could call in, I know it wouldn't be immediate in an emergency situation, but I just wonder if now is the right time to actually make this purchase.
I should note that this was approved in the budget for this fiscal year, that you all appropriated this time last year, just to throw that out there.
It can't sit on the shelf for too long, because you have to have a 20-minute flight every two months for each pilot to maintain proficiency. So the most it would sit on a shelf is two months, based on the general order.
That's good information.
I would just also like to add that in, you know, emergency situations, I think, like you said, that, you know, though there are probably other municipalities we can call upon for drone usage, if we just call to mind the most recent emergency, all resources were deployed everywhere and need for tools like this were, you know, pretty limited. And so I think, to the point Mayor Greenberg made early on in this discussion, you know, if even one life can be saved or impacted by this purchase, it makes $14,000 extremely worth it.
And I think, the trap I'm falling into is there's so much baggage with drones right now, right? Like, in the news and with everything that's going on in the world, so I think, I'm trying to set that aside and think of it like body cams, or go back another 100 years, a cop carrying a gun, right? There's a moment where the new technology comes in and it's probably, this is inevitable, I would think, that search and rescue organizations are going to be using drones, that's just going to be integrated into what they do as much as any of their other tools. So that part of me is saying, yeah, let's just, let's get this going, because it's a useful tool, like all the other useful tools. And I think sometimes I'm at least allowing my sort of preset attitude about drones maybe cloud my thinking about the usefulness of a drone for Maplewood, which I'm trying to generally try to trust the judgment of our department heads, if they say they need it.
Yeah, I'll, excuse me, I'll chime in from a historical perspective.
Please do.
When we first, when the Police Department first talked about getting public cameras, like in our parks, things of that nature, I fought it for a couple of years. And then, you know, I was shown some, you know, some other municipalities that had cameras and what they were able to do with them, and I was like, oh, okay. So they addressed all my privacy concerns, which was my primary concern. And so then I was for it. So I see this exact same thing here, it's just another technology, the camera's in a different spot. It's really not much different than, you know, putting on top of a flagpole or a power pole at Deer Creek. Lots of people get seen there, you know, exigent things happen, you know, those kinds of things. So in that sense, a drone, I think, is perfectly acceptable to use for what they've outlined here. I do have a concern about DJI, but if you think the Chinese don't have our data, then, you know, you're fooling yourself. So, but, you know, I don't think it's going to, any pre-existing purchase from DJI, I think, is grandfathered, so that shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, so. But yeah, no, I think it's, I think for the purposes that they have it here, and, you know, I'm actually kind of interested to see what we can do from a community development part of it, you know, with some cool shots of downtown Maplewood and so on and so forth, with being able to get good shots of Taste of Maplewood with, you know, all the people there and stuff, so. But anyway, yeah, and in general, $14,000 to potentially, you know, save someone or, you know, help someone, you know, being hurt severely, or whatever the case is, is certainly worth it. I know those public cameras that we have are more expensive than a drone, so.
Well, I thank you for, as usual, I fumble around for a point and then you swoop in and make the point, so that's, that's right.
In my experience with our Flock cameras, last time I went to Walmart, I saw several police officers there, and they had captured a kidnapping suspect because they were able to read the license plate and know that they were on premises. That doesn't mean that, you know, we're going to, you know, this is going to have the same efficiency, but I think the, you know, I don't see anyone being 100% our decision tonight is going to be, does the benefit outweigh the risk or the deficit? And that's what we're going to be voting on, unless there's any further discussion. In that case, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Resolution 25-8 is approved.
Next item is Resolution 25-34, authorizing the city manager to accept a bid of Smith &amp; Sons contracting in the amount of $28,577.12 for sidewalk replacement in the 7,200 block of Richmond Place.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, we didn't pay, May, right?
We did not.
Good.
And just to note, the county does require for CDBG purposes that we accept the lowest bid. This is a contractor we had not worked with before.
Right.
And I do apologize to the residents on Richmond Place that we have to do their sidewalks twice.
That requirement from St. Louis County is ridiculous.
That's absurd, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely absurd.
So going back to the non-discrimination, if we're letting a contract like this, is that, does that become part of the criteria of contractor selection?
This would be an exempt contract because this is county money appropriated from federal funding.
Okay. All right. Other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Resolution 25-34 is approved.
Next item is Bill 6283, authorizing the city manager to execute documents to grant an easement to Maplewood Enterprises LLC and STL Multi Partners I LLC to allow a parking lot access drive aisle.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Amber, would you like to briefly describe the easement?
If you take a look at the map provided on page 37, the alley was originally plotted to run through that parking lot, but instead kind of evolved over time. It was never built all the way through to Le Cleed Station Road, so it kind of wraps and ends behind those residences along Ranalls. So the apartment essentially assumed that it was their land anyways and went ahead and paved it and constructed curbs. So we are obviously willing to allow them to continue to do that and maintain it at their own cost. It's, we certainly didn't have to give anything up for them to have access to that easement.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Second reading, Bill 6283, authorizing the city manager to execute documents to grant an easement to Maplewood Enterprises LLC and STL Multi Partners I LLC to allow a parking lot access drive aisle.
Motion to approve the bill.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The third and final reading will occur at our next council meeting. Moving on to council and staff reports, mayor's report. The only report I have is that Friday night, I'll have the mayors from Brentwood and Richmond Heights over at my house, and so we're going, we're planning on solving all the world's problems in that evening.
Get the drone over there.
There'll be non-alcoholic beer involved. Ward one?
Yes, I would like to take this opportunity during the city council meeting we have during Pride Month to just express my deepest gratitude to the members of, the residents of Ward one that elected me to this office as a member of the queer community. I also want to recognize that there has been some discourse on social media platforms that has been both encouraging, but also many, there have been many comments that have been harmful and hateful, and I want to personally condemn that kind of language online. I know I'm not the only council member here who would say that, but, you know, I think it's important to me to just recognize that the encouragement that I've gotten from the residents of the City of Maplewood is why I even had the confidence to run for public office here. And I want to continue to encourage that kind of conversation online, especially recognizing how many queer members of the community are so young. You know, to have lived in a place like Maplewood when I was a very young member of the queer community would have been so positively life-changing. And so I want to let the young members of the queer community know that you're seen and valued and heard, and I am here specifically so that I can continue to fight for this community in every way that I can here in Maplewood, just knowing everything that's going on in the, at the state level and the federal level. Additionally, Juneteenth is just around the corner. This is the only meeting that we have in the month of June, so I also want to recognize that that is coming up. It's time to honor Black history, liberation, and the ongoing fight for justice for that community. And, you know, Maplewood is home to a considerable population of the BIPOC community, and so I just want to acknowledge that that level of diversity may not yet be attained on the city council. I think there's work to do, obviously, and I want to be somebody here that is going to openly and outwardly be open to learning and doing that work. And so I just wanted to thank the community. I want to thank the Ward one residents for electing me to this office, and again, I just want to thank everybody for the encouragement and also condemn some of the negative comments that have been seen online.
Thank you. Do we have a report from Ward two?
Well, first of all, here, here. I don't have anything nearly as exciting to say, but I did want to, while I have the floor, just say publicly, I know we heap a lot of praise on these folks, but I wanted to heap some more praise on our Fire Department, who hosted a red card training for the scout troop the other day, and these three firefighters were just, and I wish I could remember which three it were, but I'm sure Chief Pete knows, they're just wonderful with the scouts, and it was awesome, and I was so proud of Maplewood, because we could have been in Richmond Heights or something, you know, our troop sort of covers a wide territory, but here we were in Maplewood, and I was so proud of our guys, so, thank you, Fire Department.
And Ward three?
No, nothing to report for me.
Yeah, no, I'll second what Councilmember Wiley said. I mean, it's, I'm not on social media for that specific reason, and I've heard absolutely, you know, horrible things about, you know, some of the comments, and unfortunately, we're a governmental entity, so, you know, it's hard to curb that speech, but yeah, I'm certainly in support of queer community here. I have a gay daughter myself, so it's, and it's such a strong community here, which is fabulous. And yeah, no, it's great, I'm glad you have a lot of support, and you should.
Do we have a city attorney's report?
Notch nightmare, thank you.
City manager's report, please.
I'll follow on Councilmember Wiley's comments, since it is in my report, that the city did respond to some of those hateful comments by reminding council and the community that unfortunately, as a public entity, we have to provide an open forum. The Supreme Court has ruled that we need to do that even when comments are hateful, and I share Councilmember Wiley's distress, and that of all of this community members who reached out to us to express their discomfort and outrage with some of the things that were shared on the city's Facebook page. We do have a policy, and we've updated that since that post was made in response to some of those community members' inquiries. We do have ability to manage that to some degree, but certainly not to the degree that would seem logical to those who encounter those hateful comments. I think the alternative for us as an entity would be no presence at all on social media, and I think staff wants to be able to create a space for positive support and comments. We certainly didn't delete the post because we stand behind it. We, in the City of Maplewood, support our queer community. That is part of the city's DEIB plan, and we will continue to take proactive measures to express that support, both within our staff and within our community. And we thank the council for supporting us and doing that work, particularly through the implementation of that plan, which is very comprehensive. So I did include a copy of the updated Facebook policy for you in my packet. Additionally, I just wanted to acknowledge that our Police Department was awarded the Missouri Blue Shield distinction, so we will now be eligible for grants, should those become available from the governor's office after July 1st. Thank you to the council for passing the resolution in support of that. We do expect grant funds to be unlocked as part of this funding, depending on what the, this special session yields and how much of the state's budget is taken up with other matters. That being said, we do have a number of items in next year's budget that we could easily seek grant funding for, so we will do that. Additionally, I wanted to provide a public update regarding the email that I sent before this meeting with respect to the business at 3,600 South Big Bend Boulevard, which you granted a liquor license for at your last meeting, and there was quite a bit of confusion about what was going to be inhabiting that space. And I want to apologize for me, on behalf of my staff, not communicating the information clearly and consistently. The gentleman who is seeking to purchase 3,600 South Big Bend, who owns Big Bend Liquor, the sale had not closed at the time, and to my knowledge, still has not closed. So that liquor license is prospective. During his negotiations for that property, the existing owner leased the space to the vape shop, and we granted a business license because that's an allowable use to the vape shop. So you may have noted that a vape shop opened in that space over the weekend. Thank you, Councilmember Homa, for letting me know that, in fact, the sign had been turned on. So that shop will operate for as long as the current landlord and next landlord allow it to be. I don't have any information on what that will look like. I don't have any information on whether the business owner realizes that his property is being, in the process of being sold, but that is the current circumstance, and we will continue to follow our code in allowing permissible businesses to occupy commercial spaces. Last thing I wanted to note, a press release came out today. We don't have any concrete information as of yet, that the president did approve a major disaster declaration in Missouri for May 16th, for the tornado that we experienced in St. Louis.
Item number 12 is the second, public comment session. Is there anyone signed up?
There is no one signed up at this time.
Okay, then item number three is a motion to hold a closed session pursuant to Missouri 610.021, to discuss legal matters.
Contract negotiations.
Huh? Negotiated contract.
Contract, contract negotiation.
Contract negotiation.
Thank you.
Motion to hold a closed session. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falkingham?
Yes.
Mayor Greenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Homa?
Yes.
Councilmember Maddox?
Yes.
We will meet in closed session, then we will come back out and adjourn.